All right, well then let's call this meeting to order. Peggy, can I have roll call please?
Commissioner Genosick?
I'm here.
Commissioner Schreie?
Here.
Commissioner Horowitz?
Here.
Commissioner Rodi?
Here.
Commissioner Malash?
She is not joining us this evening. All right, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the
United States of America.
To the Republic One Nation Under God Invisible but Living Justice Strong. Okay, this time do we have any public comments? All right, seeing no public comment, let's move on to correspondence.
Not much course in the way of correspondence. I provided everyone with a copy of communication from League of Municipalities identifying South Fayette been designated as a banner community again for 2021, multiple years for us. So congratulations to us and just passing on that that information to everybody. And then in addition, we received our monthly report from Oak Ridge Fire Department just detailing their responses and and trainings for the month.
Okay, great job on Banner Community too, thank you. Um, let's move on to consent calendar items. Do I have a motion or approval to approve minutes?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is there a motion to pay the bills?
I make a motion to pay the bills.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Financial reports?
Yeah, financial reports are here and you know, these are, these covered just the month of January right now. We have our but general fund budget comparison and then balance sheets and profit and loss in the in the capital account. And that along with the the bank balances are really there for transparency. And then we keep them up even after the meeting is over, so anyone can go back and take a look at them if they have specific questions. But unless you guys have any questions on the details, we can just accept them as they're presented.
No, I don't have any questions. Okay. Let's move on to bank balances.
Yeah, again, same thing, just kind of for transparency sake. Really what this does is just take a screenshot from our 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 bank accounts at Northwest and show everyone what those bank balances are. So you can see that while we're still in in the part of the year where we're not seeing real estate taxes coming in yet, we're still doing okay with our reserves and everything. So good, good financial shape.
All right, thank you. All right, let's move on to department reports. Let's start with building permit reports.
Yeah, I'll pull up the activity for the month of February. You know, if you, if we, if we get to the end and look at the fees that were brought in, it's a really healthy month. Fifty-five thousand is well over our norm. However, you could see the line share of that is right here, that forty-five thousand dollars in fees for for BJ's, which was recently approved. Outside of that, you really just see some single family homes, the Ryan Homes or or the Lafayette Plans. You see some charter homes in there as well, and then just some additions on existing homes. So good, healthy month for us, but largely driven by the BJ BJ's wholesale.
Very nice. All right, um, communications and community development report.
Well, tell you what, maybe we put a pause on that until to see if Andrea joins us. And if not, then I can give her a report, but if you don't mind, maybe we can just go through the other departments first.
Absolutely. All right, well then let's move to engineers report.
Great, you know, with us on the call, Jason Polovich from from Gibson Thomas, Jason, are you out there?
I am, hi, John.
Hi, how you doing?
I'm good. Hi, everyone, I'm Jason Polovich, happy to be here.
So for those of you that aren't aware, Jason is our new township engineer. And we want to welcome aboard, he comes to us from Gibson Thomas and he will be our dedicated specialist for the township and for engineering needs. So welcome, we're glad to have you.
Oh, thank you, I appreciate that, Commissioners. I will represent the planning commission and the board of commissioners moving forward. I did provide a report tonight, I know, you know, we're early on here, we don't have a whole lot going on with the township. But I did want to outline, you know, the 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 few projects that we are involved with. If you have any questions regarding my report, I'd be happy to answer.
No, I have none.
Yeah, no, thanks for for jumping into these, Jay, I know, you know, it's, I'll touch on this a little bit and under my comments. But you know, we have a lot of moving parts, so you know, we're we're bringing Jason and his team on, you know, as smooth as we can. So the these four projects were just emergent things that jumped out and that that they, Jason and his team did a great job just jumping in and getting this squared away with a few items.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, let's move to Park and Recreation's report.
Great. Paul, I'll pull it up, you drive me through it.
Sounds good. Good evening, everyone, so I just want
Oh, you broke up.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I hear you now.
We have the Easter egg bunny hop trail drive-through event coming up on March thirty-first. It's a Wednesday, the students don't have school that day, so it's from twelve to three in Fairview Park, hopefully. And we opened up camp registration. Parents are very excited to have camp, I've been getting emails with just like questions. So we're happy to have that back. We are going to have earth cleanup week. We're going to put together little giveaway bags and people can stop down to the township building and pick them up outside the building. And then they can clean up their streets, the trails, and then we'll have a dumpster behind the township building where they can dispose of those, or we can go and pick them up, Public Works can go pick them up. So that will be in April. And we are going to have movies in the park this summer. We'll have one in June, July, and August, and then hopefully maybe some in September and October. And later on the agenda, you'll see a resolution, I'm applying for the DCNR grant that we do in April. We're going to apply for baseball fields up at Fairview Park. We're kind of calling calling it Fairview Phase Three. Hopefully we'll get into Phase One this year, which will be the roadwork, parking, site prep. Phase Two will be the splash pad, which we already got a DCNR grant for. So now we're going to go for additional DC and fun DCNR funding for the ball fields. And then pretty much that project will be complete, which is very exciting. I'm also going to be working with baseball, they are going to need a lot of support. We're also going to talk to them about some financial commitment. Because it's always good to have multiple parties involved when you go for decent grant to show that there's more parties involved. So I'm working very well with baseball currently. And we are the playground project should be moving along, we'll be having a pre-bid meeting hopefully in the next couple of weeks and get construction started. I've been working with some splash pad reps to come up with some renderings, so hopefully we'll have some examples to you guys, hopefully in the next month that we can then nail down the design of splash pad and move forward with that as we move forward with our Fairview Phase One. Have something else to touch on, but do you guys have any questions on kind of those? There's a lot of big projects going on, which is so exciting, so. Yeah, any questions?
No.
Awesome. So I just wanted to touch on kind of what we're seeing, envisioning for events this summer. So we have the bunny hop drive-by at the end of March, and then movies in the park, and I'm going to do tickets for movies in the park and kind of markings on the fields to keep distancing. But kind of what are our thoughts about in particular, in particularly the fireworks? Because I have to let the firework company know ASAP. And then kind of Community Day, because we need a good like four to five months to plan Community Day, so I kind of just wanted to get everyone's feel on the direction that we're going.
I'm okay with planning both at this point, I think because they're outdoor activities, I think because we've had a full year of COVID and, you know, people understand the virus and, you know, wear your mask to protect yourself, clean your hands, sanitize. Because they're going to be outside, I think as long as we keep, you know, social distancing and safety in mind as we're planning these, I'm of the opinion that we can, we could go ahead and start planning them for this year.
Do we want to, you know, I don't know if we're going to have like the overall grand concept of Community Day? Because actually we had like five thousand people in attendance, so do we want to maybe kind of what my thoughts were was kind of push it back maybe to September, October, and then break them up into smaller events? So say like a kids event where we have all the blowups in the is and then one in one month, the next month have maybe something that's more of like a vendor setup? So we can kind of control the crowds a more, so we're still kind of getting and hitting, you know, kids, adults, businesses, but we're doing a more and kind of smaller spread out events.
My preference would, my preference would maybe to not do like any of the bounce houses or anything like that where people come contact and touching surfaces and things like that. I'm thinking more of like a hands-on individual.
Just like businesses and vendors, kind of?
Yeah, like something like that where people are free to walk around.
More like in September, October, we can do it like a fall festival, so it gives a little bit more time for us to get you know, vaccinated, people are a little bit more comfortable and things like that. And then that gives us more time to, you know, to plan too, because we have more, not more to do, but just because of like COVID, there'll be like, you know, more details that we have to pay attention to and control.
Does that interfere with the sports seasons?
If I pick the day earlier on, they'll be able to kind of schedule around that. Because actually Community Day always, it always falls on football's like scrimmage weekend anyways. So as long as I give them a date, like if we pick a date, you know, the next couple of weeks, I let all that athletic associations know and they just schedule around that.
Okay.
And then I can also still have like movies in the park in September and October, so we have more, more events, but smaller scale, that makes sense. And then hopefully we'll get back to like one hundred percent next year. Yeah, and then I think with fireworks, we maybe control how many people come in the park. We do tickets for actually in the park, so we're not too many people, these are just kind of things that I'm, you know, brainstorming of how to move forward, but still keep it safe.
I mean, target, target some alternative areas where people can park to view them as well and kind of just spread out a little bit.
That's what I was thinking for both, like for Community Day too, we could just spread out multiple locations and the fireworks too, just have different landing places, so.
Yeah, and then just look at your exposure to touch surfaces, like anything that would be a touch surface, like I wouldn't do the petting zoo, I wouldn't do any of like the rock climbing or any of that stuff where people are touching surfaces and try to keep it more hands-off.
Live entertainment, sit and watch.
Exactly.
Vendors where you can communicate from distance.
Exactly.
Right, so then we'll plan for, like I said, September, October for that fireworks in July, and then more of the pop-up events like we have more drive-bys maybe in October for Halloween.
Okay.
Movies in the parks, continue it through October, Peters did that last year and they did like Halloween movies in October and people just bundled up and they came out. So yeah, we'll just do more smaller scale.
Okay, that sounds great.
Awesome.
Sounds good.
Yeah, thanks Paula.
Yep, so I think that's all I had, very exciting times happening, so I've been very busy, but I'm excited to see everything come to fruition, because we have a lot going on.
We do, but it's exciting, it's good to talk, thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioner Rodi, I know that Andrea was able to join us, so we want to circle back to community communications and community development, we can do that?
Yes, let's do that.
Okay.
Thank you, sorry for the technical difficulties, I think my video might look like a funhouse mirror right now as well. On my end, I don't know. I just wanted to note a couple of the highlights, the magazine for the spring is going to be coming out around the end of this month. We'll be featuring the volunteer fire departments and the volunteers and letting people know that there are opportunities for them to volunteer. Another thing that'll be in the magazine of note is we'll have our first round of photos of the veterans and service members published. That's for the people who have done their military banners. Part of their package was they also got an appearance in the magazine, so you'll see the first round of those come out. We're approaching twenty total completed military banners at this point. And they're rolling in steadily, so I certainly expect that that will increase. To guarantee that the banners, that each banner goes up for this Memorial Day, our deadline will be around mid-April to give the banner company enough time to do the turnaround on those. So anyone who wants to order them should put their order in and get all their information to me by tax day. Also, if you do go directly to troopbanners.com, which there is a link to on our website, but you can see the completed banners that have been approved by the people who ordered them so far. Again, troopbanners.com and then you click on South Fayette from the communities and then you can see the banners that we have so far, what those look like. I have other things on my report that I'd be glad to answer any questions about.
Yeah, everything's going really good. Do you have a number of how many people signed up for the app?
Yes, we have about four hundred and forty through the App Store and more than a hundred and twenty-one through Google Play. So we we have increased since the last, since last month's meeting as well.
Wonderful. All right, thank you.
Thanks Andrea.
Thank you.
Thank you Andrea.
All right, let's move to police report.
Hello, everyone, I have just two items tonight, my first one is we started to advertise for to hire an officer hopefully by late July, early August. We're going to start accepting applications for entry-level patrolmen on the twenty-second of March. We're going to take applications through April sixteenth. And then the physical agility test will be May fifth and the written exam will be May eighth. So that'll establish our list by the end of May. And then we'll bring somebody on probably in August, that's, that's the goal. The second item is last, in February, we did a virtual coffee with the chief, was very successful, there was about fifteen to twenty people that that came into the virtual meeting. So we've scheduled another one for Friday, April sixteenth, from twelve noon till one PM again, and it seems to be I seem to get more people with the virtual than I do in person, because it's easier for them to, you know, kind of zoom in on it. So we're going to do that on April sixteenth, and that's all I have if there's any questions.
Yeah, that's it, I see Officer Ryan completed his first year probation.
Yes, Officer Christian Ryan, he successfully completed his probation period on February fifth. So he's full-fledged on now and he's going to be a good addition to our department, so he was a very
Great, all right, thanks, chief.
Sure.
All right, let's move to Public Works Report.
Great, which I thought I saw you out there, I don't know if your camera's working or if you'd like me to to go or anything, but if you're out there, you can, you can chime in. Might be having trouble with, I think he may have been the mystery iPhone. Well, their their activity report is up here, you know, the month of February, you know, really had a lot of winter maintenance involved in it. Hopefully we're getting through that, we had a little bit of a, I don't want to call it a scare, but we did get kind of low on on salt supply, but we're able to refill our bins and we're in good shape now. We did have, you know, a good amount of overtime over the month. All in all, the the fleet held up pretty good, just, you know, a few minor episodes of downtime and repairs that were needed. And I think that was the bulk of their activity in in February. I would say I know that the month of March, we're going to, with this good weather, we'll, we'll start working on some of the the park projects, helping Paul out with that playground program and some of the prep work. We also will be bidding our road program this month, and I know that the 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 crew will be busy doing some inlet repairs and other kind of soft spot adjustments on the on our roadway, so we can keep our our contractors focused on on paving. But if anyone has any questions on anything Public Works related, I'll do my best to answer it.
No, I'm good. All right, let's move to Request Tracker Report.
Yeah, so Request Tracker Reports, you know, a lot of these are dealing with recycling and with and with trash. We had a lot of calls and inquiries with the bad weather, just about missed calls. Waste Management had to adjust their schedules somewhat to deal with the the weather, but all in all, they did a good job of of keeping keeping up with with missed pickups and and things of that nature. We did, the township did order or secure additional recycling bins. I know that we were, we were out for a little while, so you know, as new homes are coming in, we're, we're providing folks with with new recycling bins and trying to keep those recycling numbers up, even though with glass being out of the the collectibles are are volumes down a little bit. However, we're, you know, we're sponsoring glass recycling events to try to take credit for for a lot of the glass that residents do want to recycle. But I would say that, you know, the month of February and a little bit into March was, but you can see here, most of them were dominated by by trash and recycling comments.
Okay. All right, let's move on to Assistant Manager Report.
Pat, I'll pull it up, if you can hear, you can, you can run through some of the highlights of this for us.
Yes, thank you, John, good evening, everyone. If you recall, last month, I spent a little bit of time talking about the PMA slash FEMA disaster relief reimbursement grant that we were applying for. After a number of calls over a basically a three-week period, we were able to finally finalize our application and submit it to FEMA slash PMA for reimbursement. Right now, we're looking at what we submitted, it's close to ten thousand dollars for reimbursement. Unfortunately, they did exclude our virtual trailer and that was actually due to a rule change in September of last year that be due to that rule change, obviously that changed the name of the game for submit submitting for reimbursement. So unfortunately, that won't apply, so we're looking for another way to qualify that under some additional grants that may be out there potentially that I'm looking into. The other, one of the other topics I'm working on is obviously the Volunteer Finance Committee. We've received a few more applications, we're still accepting applications, obviously, until March thirty-first for that. So anyone still interested in that could still has time to get their applications into the township. I've also been working on the the escrow account reporting, because we discovered that we have some potential opportunities in the area, obviously, for improvement in the escrow process overall. So I was able to get about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars built out in escrow fees. And right now, we've collected approximately twenty-eight thousand dollars to date in the escrow process. And I'm working on some additional, basically, literature to pass out during the escrow process. So people basically know what to express, expect as they go through it, so. The Military Banner Program, Andrea already discussed that. West Penn Power threw us for a little bit of a loop this past week. Their legal department was reviewing our application and apparently their legal department now feels that we need to basically take pictures of all of the telephone poles that we're potentially looking at for installing the banners. So I've been partnering with everyone and we're going to make this happen and get this into them as quickly as possible so that that we won't, so that this process shouldn't be held up anymore. So, but like I said, that was a little bit of a surprise. One of the things that I also worked on additionally was the LERTA process. On our website, we have the one LERTA application, and I was working with John and Bob on basically updating the fees, updating the schedule for the different LERTAs, because well, obviously, we have a different schedule for the deteriorated PED Business District. And I wanted to make sure that that was appropriate, make sure that was accurate, because obviously, we have a number of developments coming in, one of them being BJ's. And I wanted to make sure they had the appropriate application moving forward for that to be submitted. Delinquent real estate taxes, I've been working with Phil Leonard from Jordan, obviously, to provide the information for our auditors for all the delinquent real estate tax in the township. And last but not least, we're looking at potentially submitting an RCAP grant for the month end of March. And right now, I'm in the process of gathering some preliminary information and working with John to see exactly what exactly we need in order to submit that. It's a, it's a little bit of a lengthy process and it's a lot of financial information that's required. So John and I are sort of partnering together and sort of working through that. So if there's any questions on anything, I'm open to anything, so thank you.
Yeah, great job, Pat, let me know if you need any help with the RCAP and gathering any information on my side.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd just like to thank Pat for just having persistence here, you know, thinking about that PMA FEMA application. I was copied on a lot of the the email correspondence and the level of detail that was required on their end to get this reimbursement was was pretty significant, I mean, we were taking photos of sanitary Purell dispensers and, you know, various quantities of PPE, they they wanted to know just ridiculous levels of of detail. So thanks for sticking with that, that was a, that was a challenging process, but you handled it really well.
Thank you.
All right, then let's move to Managers Report.
Great, I submitted my report to the board, I'll touch on some of the highlights for you. And then I know we have a lot of agenda items, so we can jump right into those. I wanted to just make sure that kept you posted on progress of our municipal complex. Actually, on tonight's agenda, we'll, we'll ask the board to formally approve that that land development. But the earthwork was approved, the contract was approved last month. We had a pre-construction meeting this morning, and I can tell you the contractor is, you know, eager and and ready to to get started. So we will see activity out there maybe as early as next week if weather cooperates. And, you know, working with the board and our architects, we're, we're progressing through the conceptual design of of the building. Hope to be there in the in the coming months. You know, that you've seen some of the interior renderings that they're, they're getting together and they think they're about four to six months away from having, you know, the project buttoned up and ready to be in a position to bid. So we'll, we'll have this on parallel track with, you know, working with you guys on some of those design options as the construction drawings are pieced together. We also kicked off our comprehensive planning process, had a meeting, a virtual meeting today with with our consultants. We will be scheduling some some opportunities for the board to speak with the consultants to share your vision for the comp plan and also start thinking about like a steering committee we would put together and various stakeholder groups we want to make sure that we talk to. So I'm happy that we were able to to get that that project started this month. You heard from Jason earlier from Gibson Thomas, we've had a couple of meetings just to talk about transition and and getting started, so won't go into too much detail there. Our Public Works Assessment, we have a professional consultant, Jason Daly, that's working on our behalf, looking at the the operations of that department. He's been with us since January, hopes to have that process wrapped up by the end of this month. We'll have some meetings with the board to review some of those findings and, you know, maybe even a joint meeting with some of our Public Works leadership to talk about what what he's found for us in terms of, you know, ways to improve efficiencies and and to, you know, just get on a on a track for reporting with the board that that you want to see. I think a lot of these other things were either talked about or they'll show up on on the report. You know, the banking RFP, we did have some progress there, it's an agenda item for this evening. We have two personnel items here that I include in my report. And the Military Banner Program is something that we've, we've covered already. So unless there's questions on that, we can jump into the agenda items.
No, I have no questions.
Great, thank you.
All right, great job, John. All right, let's move on.
Thanks for that, John, that was really good.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
All right, let's move to new business. Item A, discuss and consider SP dash O two dash twenty twenty-one, land development land development application for BL Cream Company, 3115 Washington Pike, Zone C1 and V1.
Good evening, Commissioners. Don Housley, reporting for the planning commission. The planning commission has recommended approval for SPO 221. Preliminary and final land development approval of the proposed land development component for the change in use is granted by the South Fayette Township zoning hearing board from a wholesale food distribution company to a wholesale distributor of flooring, wall towel and countertop surfaces with a limited showroom facility and offices with associated parking and other related land development facilities to be known as the MSI, located at 3115 Washington Pike and also being known as Tax Parcel 322P15. The property is Zone C2 Highway Commercial and a B1 Business District, which has caused some of the confusion here because the building sits in the B1 District. The use is a special exception in that district, which the zoning hearing board had to approve at its meeting on February 24th, 2021. So the planning commission recommended this project, SPO 201, for approval, subject to the following. Mitoll Division of KU Resources Review of February 16th, 2021. The applicant declared that the showroom is designated within the material submitted with this application is for use of invited wholesale customers only. And as such, it is not intended nor will it be used for retail sales to the general public. The applicant further agreed to note this condition upon the site plan. And then, of course, the one that always comes in, they requested a modification for survey monuments to allow for the iron pins and monumentation that exists at this time to remain in place, which we support.
All right, is there a motion to approve SP-02-2021 land development application for BL Cream, 3115 Washington Pike, Zone C1 and V1?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Item B, discuss and consider SP-03-2021 land development application for South Fayette Municipal Complex, Hickory Grade Road, Zoned B1.
Don, I know you did a review on this, just to make you aware, Kristin Brodsky from CEC, I I saw him out there as well. So he's also online if if you needed him. But my understanding is there were some minor comments in in KU's review that that they, that Chris and CEC have addressed. But Don, I'll let you, you know, kind of go through it as you normally would.
That is correct. We didn't type up an actual form or letter from your planning commission to you. We didn't feel that was necessary. The comments were all minor in nature. We did do a very thorough review. We came up with a list of of, again, minor comments. We forwarded those to the manager. Manager forwarded them on to CEC, and those that was already been addressed and revision sent back to me. We just haven't had time to formally update them. But at this point, the planning commission has recommended approval, subject just to those minor conditions.
Chris, anything that you would like to add on your behalf?
No, I think Don covered it. Thank you.
Okay, thanks for your work on this, guys.
All right, well, then is there a motion to approve SP-03-2021 land development application for South Fayette Municipal Complex, Hickory Grade Road, Zoned B1?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Item C, discuss and consider F-01-2021 Minor Final Petruska Subdivision Plan, 4382 Battle Ridge Road, Zoned R1.
Okay, Commissioners, likewise, the planning commission has recommended the approval of Joseph and Megan Petruska for application file number F012021. This is preliminary and final approval recommendation of a minor subdivision to be known as a Petruska subdivision and lot consolidation plan number one. It's located at 4382 Battle Ridge Road, and it's also known as Tax Parcel Numbers 490C1, 490C2, and 490D6. The property is Zoned R1, Royal Residential, and the proposed use is compliant with that zoning. At its February 25th, 2021, meaning the planning commission recommended approval for the final subdivision subject to the following. Mitoll Division of KU Resources Review Letter dated February 18th, 2021. The planning commission also discussed and agreed that the subdivision of a lot on a private road should be permitted as the property previously legally fronted on the private street. And further, that the subdivision represents only a lot line change, and no additional building lots are being created at this time. The following modification is also recommended for approval, that the request for ser- or the requirement for survey monuments be waived in favor or in lieu of the iron pins that are established or set in place be allowed to remain, which KU Resources recommends.
All right, is there a motion to approve F-01-2021 Minor Final Petruska Subdivision Plan, 4382 Battle Ridge Road, Zoned R1?
Make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item D, discuss and consider Resolution 2021-03 Mod Wash Sewing Planning Module.
John, would you like me to handle this?
Yeah, go right ahead, Don. Thanks.
Okay, all right. What this is, Commissioners, is this is an Act 537 Resolution for sanitary sewage disposal. You, as a township, set forth the the practice and and the mapping of this system, and you're changing the use and the volume of flow that goes into the system. It's necessary for you to approve that application and transmit it to the DEP. So it's just simply a formality here. You do this with every new land development that occurs in the township.
All right, is there a motion to approve Resolution 2021-03 Mod Wash Sewing Planning Module?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item E, discuss and consider Resolution 2021-04 Reappointing Zoning Hearing Board Members.
John, do you want me to handle this?
Yeah, you're probably most familiar with it, Bob, if you don't mind.
Tom Aube and I, Tom being the zoning hearing board solicitor, had a discussion with respect to having one comprehensive document that identifies all the members and all alternative members of the zoning hearing board, when their original appointments occurred, when there are subsequent appointments, or I would say reappointments occurred, and for their terms. And that would be the purpose of this resolution, to memorialize these facts.
Why are we, why are we doing this? We never did anything like this in the past.
Well, I I think it's it's belt and suspenders at this point and with respect to municipal planning code and how these appointments are made, and we're confirming everything that we've done. And this is the way we should proceed. We'll just update this in the future.
Okay.
Every time we make an appointment.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, Bob, if I'm correct, the the township's code just just called for these appointments to be by resolution. But the the MPC asked for them to be by resol- by resolution, not by motion. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So I think we're just looking to be in compliance with.
Yeah, we we were compliant with the township code requirements, and then it seems to be a little bit at odds with the MPC. So this kind of solves it at this point.
All right. All right, then is there a motion to approve Resolution 2021-04 Reappointing Zoning Hearing Board Members?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Item F, discuss and consider Resolution 2021-05 Protesting the Bridge Toll.
Gwen, you probably could introduce this better than anyone.
Yeah.
Comment or go go right ahead.
Okay, so we are introducing a resolution tonight requesting or opposing the toll that has been proposed on I-79. We've reached out to our adjoining municipalities. They're also going to draft resolutions protesting the toll. We've had press conferences, and we are going to do everything we can as a municipality to try to force PennDOT to look at other revenue sources and not to I-79. And I I just want to thank my fellow board members and colleagues for attending the press conference. It was nice that we were all unified and showing our support to opposing this toll. So I just want to say thank you to everybody as well, and thank you to Don for drafting.
On that note, I've kind of just been waiting to say this, but you did a fantastic job at that press conference, and you made, did South Fayette proud. And hearing about all the progress we made and having all those politicians recognizing that was pretty impressive as well. So I thought that was a really good day for South Fayette. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, Gwen.
Yeah, thank you, Gwen.
Thank you, everybody. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 05 of 2021? Resolution protesting the toll.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Can I make that motion again?
Yes.
Okay.
We're gonna stop it.
I know we are.
All right, item G, discuss and consider Resolution 2021-06 DCNR Grant.
This is a concurring resolution. Paula and the township are preparing to submit an application to DCNR. This would be what we refer to as our third phase of Fairview Park, the installation of baseball fields. I believe that this grant, if granted, the way it's laid out, would would call for artificial turf fields. It's a $1 million application. So we're looking for you guys to to support it and and for us to get our application into the to DCNR.
Absolutely. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2021-06 DCNR Grant?
I make that motion to approve it.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good job, Paula. Whenever you do submit, let me know so we can get you letters of support and everything you need to get behind this project.
Sounds good. This is the one where I have to upload the letters of support to. So I'll get that to you here in the next couple of weeks.
Perfect.
Thank you, Paula.
Thanks, Paula.
Item H, discuss and consider releasing the excess maintenance agreement for Joseph B. B. Fay Company in the amount of $39,375.
Yeah, this is the release of a bond Cecil Sturgeon roadway. The township staff has performed an inspection. We reviewed the repair work that that the Joseph B. Fay Company has performed on the roadway, and we deemed it acceptable. We think they did a fine job, and we're comfortable with releasing that bond. They're no longer using the roadway.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve releasing the excess maintenance agreement to Joseph B. Fay Company in the amount of $39,375?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item I, discuss and consider paying LMNR Excavating LLC partial payment for 2020 stormwater improvements for contract number 20-SW1 in the amount of $158,247.
Yeah, the board authorized this contract a few months back. Work has begun. This is payment for the work that that has been completed as approved by by Lennon Smith, who laid out the the project. I'll make a motion to approve that payment.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Item J, discuss and consider advertising the 2021 road program.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Look, can, just can we?
Sorry, sorry.
Can we look at the road program real fast? So this is what the attached outlines all of the roads that are planned for this year and the type of work that's to be done on those roads.
That's right. Yeah, it's, we've laid it out as a base bid. I'm sorry, this this is kind of small to to see. But we laid it out as a base bid with some ad alternates. And, you know, we had a discussion with the with our engineers today with Lennon Smith about this. There are a couple roadways that are appear on this base bid. Wabash is an example, as well as maybe one or two others where there there have been some utility work in the area that is going to going to take on that paving for us. So when the final ad goes out, we'll remove those. We have added a couple other roads to this list. But by and large, this is about 90, 95% of the roads that we're looking to take on. 1.5 million is our our budget this year. We're looking to have a base bid that comes in around 1, 2, or 1, 3. And then we want to have some other groupings of of roads that can get us to that 1.5. So when we have numbers, we can present it to the board with some options for which ones we'll go with. But right now, I think is a is a great time to come at it. I know that costs and pricing seems to be pretty low. So we're we're feeling good that we're going to have another aggressive year of of paving.
Wonderful. All right, thank you. All right, is there a motion to approve advertising the 2021 road program?
I make that motion. We accept it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, item K, discuss and consider ordinance 2021-02 Accepting the Roads in Berkeley Ridge. There are those. So the next couple are just road acceptances.
That's right. Yeah, we we advertise them. I think we presented to you last month about the why they're here. So this is, you know, just getting them on our books. I'll make a motion to accept ordinance 2021 for Berkeley Ridge.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Let's just go down on quickly then.
I'll do it, if that's okay.
Twin Ponds, a motion to approve Streets in the Legend, and to accept Longview Circle.
I make that motion to accept the roads.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion's passed. Item O, discuss and consider advertising ordinance 2021-06 Amending Chapter 195 Zoning Property Maintenance.
And basically, all that we're looking to do here is to update our the the year of the International Property Maintenance Code that we've formally adopted. I think we're using a 2015 version of it as our standard. So we're just looking to bring that up to 2021.
All right, so is there a motion to approve advertising ordinance 2021-06 Amending Chapter 195 Zoning Property Maintenance?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Passes. Item P, discussion of park from recreations part-time position.
Yeah, we put this on for discussion. I think when we talked with the board previously, we wanted to wait until we thought March was a good time to bring this back. Seems to be a time when we're, you know, looking to plan events, both in a in a virtual setting as well as in in person. And, you know, our discussion earlier centered around having additional, maybe smaller events. So I think it really highlights the need for us to bring some support to Paula to allow these types of events to to happen in both those those fashions in a in a safe way. We did call out a job description that that Paula's put together. So really, what we, what we'd like to do is to get your blessing to advertise for that, see what kind of response we get, share some of those candidates with you, and then, you know, look to bring this back to you once we have a recommendation for a part-time hire. But just wanted to get it on your, get it on as a discussion, see if you're comfortable with it. And if so, ask for your permission to advertise.
I'm definitely comfortable with it. What would your timeline be for hiring somebody? Would you like to have somebody on board?
Yeah, Paul, I don't know if you've given that much thought. I mean, I'm assuming, given where we are, you know, mid-March, that we'd probably be looking at end of April, May, May 1 is our ideal time.
Really, I want this person to help with summer camp, too, and kind of to be the point of contact for summer camp. Because we do get a lot of emails from parents, date changes, cancellations. And with COVID, I'm sure we're going to have more communication that we have to do with parents. So ideally, April, May, so we can get them on board, train before camp starts in mid-June.
I'm comfortable with that.
Sorry, Gwen.
No, that's okay.
We asked, how long is this person? Are you thinking about keeping him on? Will it be like full-time? Like, I know it's part-time, but I mean, seasonal kind of part-time or weekly part-time?
I was thinking more perpetuity.
Perpetuity, okay.
Yeah, our, the way that we've presented this would be for this to be a Yeah, that, our, the way that we've presented this would be for uh this to be a, I guess, a permanent part-time position. So um, not a seasonal position.
Okay. And I was just curious.
You don't, you don't need to vet or anything from us, do you? Or would you like to have one?
Um, you know, if, if we wanted to just be, you know, formal, we would like a motion just to allow us to advertise for the part-time position.
Okay, then is there a motion to approve?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, yeah, advertise away.
Thank you, everyone. I'm very excited. I feel like this is the first step for us to really expand uh the Parks Rec Department. With the parks and then the community center, so we're, we're moving forward in a very fast way. I'm very excited about it. So thank you for your support.
You deserve it. You've worked hard to really grow this program and bring it to what it is, so absolutely.
Let's do more.
I'm ready. All right, um, let's move to discussion regarding banking services.
Yes, this item's also on for discussion. Um, I think I shared with the board last month that we were resurrecting. Um, the R F P process we had on the street for banking services. Uh, since that time, um, with um. Uh, the support of some commissioners, we held uh virtual presentations with the three uh bank branches in town. Um, you know, at this point, I, I think, um, and I know Commissioner Durnosik and. And Sray, you were part of that, so feel free to jump in, but you know, my feeling is that, um, you know, the three branches we, we dealt with were. All very capable and, you know, we're, we're definitely fortunate to have them in the township. Um, it, it'd be my opinion that, um, you know, Washington Financial's presentation and the way that they. Uh, approached this R F P aligns most closely with what I, I think our needs would be. So um, that would be my recommendation in terms of um, who to award this uh service agreement with. But um, I'll let, I'll let the commissioners chime in that we're part of that process as well.
Well, I was a part of the process and um, I agree that I think they stood above, um, all of them. I know that they, all three of them could do a really, really good job, but Washington Financial. Um, more or less stood above and beyond uh the other ones as far as I'm concerned. So I would have to um, agree with John that that would be my recommendation also.
Would you want to make a motion to approve Washington Financial as our new banking services provider?
Oh, me?
Yeah.
Oh, yes, definitely. I will make a motion to have Washington Financial be our banking provider.
Okay.
I'll make us, I'll second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Passes. Washington Financial is now our bank.
Yeah, thank you both, Commissioner Durnosik and Sray for being part of that process. Um, I, I appreciate the support. It was, it was really good to. Um, you know, not, not fly at that alone, so thank you for your support there.
You're welcome.
All right. All right, at this time, is there any public comment?
Uh, good evening. This is Ben from the library.
Hi, Ben. Hi, Brian.
Hi, I just wanted to give you all a update about the library. Um, it's been a, a couple months since I've checked in. So the library has been back open for in-person services for a little over a month now. Um, it's going very well. We're still observing all safety protocols. The patrons have been very respectful and are really honestly excited to. Be able to come into the library and use our services, and we've definitely seen an increase in our computer use from patrons who have been missing that. Um, at this time, all of our programming is still virtual. Um, it's going really well, though. We're doing a variety of things over Zoom. We do two live storytimes every week. And then we also post um almost daily to YouTube and our other social medias with pre-filmed content from all of the programming staff. Who've been doing a great job. Um, that said, we are looking forward to the summer. We're exploring the potential for limited in-person programming, potentially outside or um. At other locations or a hybrid potentially with in-person and virtual. So we're still figuring that out, but we're looking forward to it. I also just wanted to recognize our friends of the library. Um, if you're not familiar with them, they are a group that's independent of the library proper. They're all volunteers and they extend what we do by supporting, by volunteering themselves, by supporting our programs. And also through fundraising and dollar gifts. Um, they've really been revitalizing their organization lately. Um, they started a brand-new Facebook page where you can go for more information. There is a page of information on our website as well. And they just elected a whole new slate of officers, um, and just have a lot of motivation right now. And so I just wanted to recognize them and can, um, you know, thank them for all their hard work. And then finally, um, April fourth through the tenth is National Library Week. Um, so just tune into our social media for the different ways we'll be celebrating that week at the beginning of April. Thank you.
Thank you. That's great.
Thanks, Ben. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Ben.
Do we have any other public comments this evening? Seeing none, any board discussion? Um, now, I just want to sit, I just want to say thank you again, you know, this, this I seventy toll, nine toll subject has been. Kind of just thrown at us. But I, I think we'll be successful. I'm, you know, I'm looking forward to working with everybody to help prevent this from happening. So. Look for more events and more opportunities, and if you haven't already done so, please go online or call or write a letter to PennDOT. Voicing your opposition to this as well. Every comment, every comment, every complaint, it helps. They're taking notice, everything. Say no to the tolls.
Just, just, just to add in on that, I mean, we've, we've worked really hard to get that intersection exactly the right way. Um, a lot of thoughts gone into it, sleepless nights have gone into it, and um, that toll ruined it. And um, you know, we've all worked too hard and put too much time and effort to have um something that unnecessary. Um, derail all that hard work, so hopefully, everybody understands that and how bad that would be for our community and it never happens.
And let alone the traffic issues that would come along with all that.
Absolutely.
It's bad now. It's just gonna intensify.
I mean, I can't even imagine that Kerwin Heights exit that'd be backed up all the way to the Parkway.
Exactly right.
South Point's gonna turn into that too.
Yep, yep.
And I don't know if anybody's noticed, but I'm so excited to see all of the construction vehicles down in Newberry on the B J site.
Yes.
It looks like that's gonna be starting any day too, so.
Yeah, there's a lot of construction going on. It's very exciting.
There is.
Over South Fayette.
Commissioner Roddy, can I give a brief comment about the construction status?
Absolutely.
Um, Bill Price, on behalf of T F South Fayette developer for Newberry, uh, met today with um, the Wagner Construction Group. And they've um, they've silk socked the entire lot today. And the um, the game plan depending on weather is to begin earth moving on Friday. So they are, they are starting their breaking ground on Friday. Um, they've been uh very helpful and respectful throughout their process. Um, they did make a request today that they envisioned in the next week or two, that there may be one half-day that requires a brief road closure. Um, that they would coordinate with us and we would coordinate with township for notifications and, and road blocking and the like. Uh, but for the most part, they think that the entire project should be pretty well self-contained, but they do think there may be a, a brief interruption for about a half-day in the coming week or so. Um, they do plan to secure uh the road entrance in the near future with fencing. Uh, and provide at key access to um the police force and to the development team. Um, there, there's been um, uh, enough activity that there's some habit where, where residents park cars and walk the property and the like. And they want to secure the construction site at this point, so um, we've told them safety first, so they plan to coordinate that as well. Uh, in the near future with the, with the chief idiot and, and the development team.
Yeah, Jeff, uh, Jeff Bernard reached out to us about the same issues.
Great. Um, so it's uh, it, all systems are go. They have their permitting, they're cracking ground. Uh, they're, they're on a, a tight schedule. Uh, the construction schedule is contemplate, continues to contemplate a, a store opening by November. Um, they do intend to have a um, at that access point in the coming months, they'll, they'll open a temporary membership uh office. So that's coming in the near future, and um, some may have noticed, but there, there's been an increased level of site tours. In the last few days, um, with the action coming with Newberry. And we did receive a purchase offer today from a pretty exciting uh tenant that we have to, there's work to be done to finalize that. But, but the activity is what we expected it to be once we got BJ's wholesale done, so it's very exciting.
Very exciting.
Good, good job, Bill.
Thanks.
Good job, Bill. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Bill, also, thanks for keeping the community up to date on what's going on through Facebook and all that. I think that's really helpful.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. I will continue to do so. Happy to do it.
And I have, I have one more thing. So at the beginning of this week, I was made aware that PennDOT intends to finally start the May View intersection. So for any of you that have endured all of the flooding and the rerouting and the detours. Um, that intersection work is supposed to begin on March twenty-second. Um, I'm waiting for them to provide us with the detour route. The, the detour route is still in with their traffic division. Once they release that, they're gonna put it out to us, so once we have that, um, we'll have Andrea push it out for Facebook. So everybody knows what the detour routes will be. And I know it'll be an inconvenience for a little while, but, but it'll be such a major, major improvement once it's done.
Yeah, it's been a long time coming for that project.
I'm coming. So. All right.
Okay, before we move on, I, there was one thing that I wanted to make sure I mentioned to the board that um, I, it escaped me until just now. And that's related to the um, the Gladden Acid Mine Drainage Project. I'm, I'm sure you guys recall us uh talking about that project. It is actually complete, um, and they are getting ready to uh, to host an open house. You'll be getting some invitation, an invite out. Uh, for that, I believe it's scheduled for sometime in April. Um, but they've already seen some improvement in the water quality. Um, just in the few weeks that it's been up and running, so a really tremendous job by the South Fayette Conservation Group. And um, excited to get in there and see how it operates, and we'll make sure that you guys all get um an invitation to that open house as well.
That sounds great. That's so exciting. That's so wonderful for our community. They did such a good job. All right, well, um, solicitors record.
Um, other than normal everyday interaction with township staff and or department heads on a variety of matters. Some of which ultimately hit the agenda. Um, it's been a busy couple months with developers agreements. All the uh projects that you've been improving, whether residential, commercial, most of them require developers of agreement. So there's been a lot of activity involving those types of matters. And in addition, there's an uptick too with respect to commercial tax appeals. Um, with properties that are going online, um, a lot of property owners are not satisfied with the county assessment. And they wind up appealing those, and some of those wind up in court. In, in addition, we also are seeing an uptick in appeals filed by property owners that are COVID-related problems. With losing tenants or tenants not paying rent, so it's kind of been a busy cup, uh, period uh for the past two months involving tax appeals as well. I do have one matter for executive session that involves uh property acquisition.
All right, so Ben, can I have a motion to adjourn to executive session, not to return? Oh, it's two, is it two personnel items and one legal item we need to discuss?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn to executive session?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, meeting adjourned. Good night, everyone. Thank you.